Work session to order, and if you'd all join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, we have a huge audience here. But we welcome you, and I think this is the first of these reports you've given, so we appreciate you being here in any regard. So we'll start with Item 1, which is our Director of the Riley County Police Department, and look forward to hearing from you.
Good evening. Thanks for having me here today. Since this is the first report I've given, I'm not sure exactly what you expect, so keep your expectations low, and I'll stand for any questions when I'm finished to talk about things that you might be specifically interested in. As you've probably, many of you have heard me say, I feel like I'm at a Law Board meeting because I see a few Law Board members here, but, you know, I just came from a meeting, actually, with the Director of the Aggieville Business Association, and that's really what I spend a lot of time doing, is visiting members of this community, the county, started expanding my visits outside of Riley County to other law enforcement agencies in Geary and Potawatomi County. And all of these discussions have been very important, and I'm learning a lot about expectations of me and the department and the future, looking forward to how we're going to work together productively and collaboratively in the years ahead. Just a few things that I'll mention specifically, and then if you want to get into more details, I'm happy to provide those. Except for the city of Randolph, which I've attended one of their meetings, I've been to all of the governing board meetings or work sessions at least twice in the first two months I've been here. And so I don't expect I will attend every single one of them every month. In fact, I was gonna go to Randolph a couple of weeks ago, and something came up at work that delayed my ability to attend, and so I didn't. But I plan to make sure that I don't miss their next one, so they don't feel like they're being slighted because I've attended others at least twice. Those on the Law Board and anybody who's familiar with the meeting that we had last week know that we are taking some different approaches and philosophies to some of our budgeting. Specifically, last week, we talked about vehicle purchases. We're gonna start doing that at the beginning of the year instead of the end. There's a lot of reasons for that, and before I'm finished, if you'd like me to get into more details, I will. We're also working on the budget for 2020. We're working, still trying to nail down some special meetings for next month. We're hoping to have two special meetings that are outside of the normal Law Board meeting to talk about what our 2020 budget projections are, again, some shifts in philosophy and approaches that we'll be bringing forward, and those meetings will be an opportunity to discuss those proposed changes for next year. Inside the department, you know, I've been, I spend a lot of time outside, and they probably wonder where I am all the time, but I do work hard to spend time within the organization getting to know how they do things here. This may be a surprise, I've probably spent more time down in the jail. They do let me out when I go down there, but I spend more time down there because I've never overseen a correctional operation before, so I think it's really important that I understand this as quickly as possible. And so I go to their briefings, I talk to their staff, I do the same thing in other areas of the department, but that's something that I think is important to do. This is probably something you don't care about, but I got a letter the other day from another organization commending a couple of my detectives for some work that they did helping them. And I know it embarrasses my staff when I do this, but it's always been my practice, so I wrote a response to the letter, and I took the original letter and the response, and I went to their briefing, and I read it out loud in front of all of their colleagues, you know? I said, "This is what someone said about you," and this is how I replied, and get used to it, because I think it's important that we do this. When I talked about some doing that, I'm also, just, there's a few minor things that I've made some adjustments to already, nothing major, but things that I don't think I need to wait, you know, six months or a year to do, and for the most part, the feedback I've received from the staff has been very positive about those changes. There's probably more significant things that will happen in the future. It would be premature for me to talk specifically about what those are, but there's certain things that I'm honing in on that I think are important, that I think will help improve our operations as a police department. One of the most significant things I've done is Friday, I sent out an anonymous employee survey to all of our major groups within the agency, corrections being one, civilian and sworn staff. And I pretty much left this survey open-ended, there's very few yes or no, check the box questions, because I don't want to drive the narrative. So I really left it open to the employees to take the opportunity to tell me what's on their mind. There's probably some things I won't be surprised to read, there may be some things that I am surprised to read, but I think it's important for me to give them an opportunity to express what they would like to see, both for the department and the service we provide, but also for them personally. We're also beginning our final preparations for the 2020 Kalia Commission on Accreditation for Law Enforcement Agencies re-accreditation. As many of you know, the Riley County Police Department was accredited in 1991, and it was the first department in Kansas, therefore the longest accredited department in Kansas. There's an entirely lengthy discussion about accreditation and why it's important. Many of you know that when I was in Virginia, our department became accredited while I worked there. When I arrived in Kansas and worked in Ottawa, it was not accredited, but it was accredited when I left, and it was one of the reasons that attracted me to this position, that it was already accredited, because it's a lot of work to lead a department through that, and I didn't know if I wanted to do that again, so knowing that they were accredited was a big carrot for me in applying for this job. So there's a lot of work that is involved, but the accreditation actually occurs in March of next year, but in early December, the date's not established yet, some of you may recall this from the past, there will be an onsite assessment of the department by assessors from Kalia. And as part of this assessment, they conduct a public hearing, and we will advertise that in advance, and this allows members of the community, including elected officials, other law enforcement agencies, to come in person and talk about the department, and it doesn't necessarily have to be good, they can talk about things they don't like, or why we shouldn't be re-accredited. But if they can't make the meeting, they also can write in, they can phone in, they can email in, so whatever's comfortable for somebody to give feedback to the assessors is made available to them. The assessors don't make a decision during their visit on whether or not we should be re-accredited, they prepare a report based on their observations during the visit, and then they submit that to the Commission on Accreditation for Law Enforcement Agencies, and that commission then makes the final determination at the conference that we'll attend next spring, and will receive our award there if they deem that we have met all the standards and we are still in compliance with those. That's really all the notes that I had to specifically share with you, but I'll stand for any questions you may have about any other topics.
Yeah, good evening, thanks for being here. You know, I like all the things you're doing, I've hear very positive comments about your leadership in the couple of months that you've been here so far, but our biggest challenge is gonna be this weekend for Fake Patty's Day, and I wanted to know if you're doing anything different than what you've been presented with, what we've done in the past, and how are you preparing for this weekend? And I don't know what the weather's gonna be like, and apparently that adds a lot to if it's going to be quote-unquote "a success" or not, so I wanted to know what kind of conversations you're having with Aggieville, as well as your police officers and the partnership within the region and outside our region.
How did I leave that off my list? In fact, I was just talking about that, wasn't the purpose of the meeting I just came from, but there was discussion about that. You know, I am gonna be there this weekend and see it firsthand for the first time. I've heard about Fake Patty's Day, but never participated or been here during it. For the most part, the approach that the police department's taking in terms of providing services and security and safety is about, is gonna be about the same. We've been, I want you to know, I am going to the planning meetings, so I haven't delegated this and not been engaged. I'm delegating it for people to carry out what we need to do, but I have been attending the meetings. So there hasn't been, according to what I've seen, any major changes to the approach that we've taken in the past. There will be some tweaks in terms of protecting the downtown, or excuse me, the Aggieville area. I know one of the things that we're gonna be using this year, I'm not sure, Chief French could probably comment on this, we're borrowing some water barriers, some portable water barriers to install in the perimeter of the Aggieville district, so vehicles couldn't be used to drive into the area where pedestrians are and cause harm. These water barriers are filled with water, the fire department, I think, is gonna help us with that, and then they can be emptied out pretty quickly if there's an emergency and emergency vehicles need to go down there. I think that's one of the major changes. One of the other things that we're adding, which is new this year, and this might cause concern for some people if they didn't know exactly how this is gonna be carried out, but we've borrowed some equipment to install, not surveillance, but cameras down there, so from the command post, we can see into Aggieville from a lot of different angles. So officers may not be everywhere all the time, I do ask them to do that, by the way, be everywhere at once, they, for some reason, they never can quite do it, but we're gonna use these cameras to keep an eye on the entire area, and that way, if we see a concern or trouble brewing, the command post will see that right away, and then they can dispatch officers to address whatever the concern may be. My overall goal, and I say this all the time, and I'll continue to say it, is we are there to ensure that there is a safe event, the safety of the patrons, the safety of the business owners, the safety of the officers and the community that surrounds Aggieville. That is our goal. That can look a lot of different ways depending on what happens that day, but we want it to be safe, we want it to be an event that eventually, we may not have to have all of the precautions in place that we have now. That may sound altruistic and optimistic overly, but, you know, we'll see, we'll see how it goes. I didn't come in because I haven't seen it before and say we're gonna do X, Y, and Z, I don't think that would be legitimate for me to do that, having never seen it before. So I'm gonna keep an open mind, and I'm gonna be down there and walking around and taking it all in, and hopefully we'll have a good event.
Just, I assume it's probably the same, but in the past, I think I've gotten less questions about Fake Patty's Day. Anytime you have a large concentration of people, there obviously needs to be more security, but less about the issues that actually happen in Aggieville, more about the issues that happen in the neighborhoods surrounding it. And there's always been a large presence of cops in those neighborhoods, but what about some of the other neighborhoods, like some of the Greek Row neighborhoods that are not really Aggieville adjacent, but are most likely, I mean, are there gonna be more police officers in those areas as well, or is the concentration really gonna be for the additional personnel in Aggieville and the Aggieville surrounding neighborhoods?
Well, we will still be patrolling the city and the county as we normally do, we can't shut that down.
Well, yeah, yeah.
So in terms of the strategy of focusing more resources there, my, I don't understand that that is going to be a change in focus, other than what we've done in the past. Obviously, if we see some issues in an area, we can repurpose some officers that may be in an area that there's not a lot of activity to address it, we'll just have to wait and see. But specifically to say we have so many officers over here watching Greek Row, no, that's not my understanding that we'll be doing that. The one thing I do know is the Highway Patrol has in the past also assisted us with this, and a lot of it has to do with Mobile Patrol, and I understand that they have a large contingent of troopers that will be in the city that day, watching for impaired drivers. As far as other things, they obviously are free to respond to any other activity, that's where we might use the Highway Patrol if there's an issue in another area that's related to Fake Patty's Day, they could assist us with that.
Got it. And additional question, totally different subject. There, I was just wondering if there were any trends in statistics, when there was the break-in of the bank on Tittle Creek Boulevard a couple, a month or so ago?
I think that was a robbery.
Yeah, robbery, and then two or three days later Dairy Queen. Is there, were those kind of just anomalies, or is there a trend of break-ins or robberies, you would say, in that kind of Northview neighborhood? Me, I don't know about Commissioner Morris, but I live in that neighborhood, so I was getting a lot of questions about that as well.
Well, I can tell you that we have, we believe we've identified one of the suspects in the robbery of the bank, and there's another person involved in that, and we are working on that case, and I'm fairly certain it will be closed with an arrest at some point. There's a lot of reasons why that hasn't happened yet, and I can't go into those details.
That's fine, you don't have to.
You'll often hear me say this, well, not often, when it's appropriate, one month of crime does not make a trend. We didn't have a very good month in January when it comes to robberies, Dairy Queen was robbed, we also had a liquor store robbed, an arrest was made in that case as well. So of the three robberies, two of them have resulted in, well, one's an arrest and one will be closed. The other thing that the commissioners up here aren't aware of, except for those on the Law Board, there's other activities that we are involved in that are pretty high-risk and dangerous that involve arresting people, and I'm keeping the Law Board apprised of those situations. Some of it has been reported in the paper, but not, not in great detail. So a lot of the things that happen in the community, I can tell you since I've been here, that are serious, involve people that aren't from here. A lot of the people that we're arresting are not from Manhattan, for some reason, they like to come here, and they get on our radar screen, and if they're committing crime, then I think we're doing a fairly good job of identifying it and arresting them when we can find them.
Well, thank you, and I agree, two events don't make a trend, but some things make the papers and others don't, so that's why I wanted to ask you, so.
And I didn't mean to be flippant, my answer by saying that.
No, no, you're fine, you're fine.
But, but obviously, we're aware of it, and we're gonna keep monitoring that. There's no, there's no connection I can cite between those three robberies, saying it's the same people.
Got it.
The same MO, it's all isolated incidents.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I'd like to thank you for working so closely with the Aggieville Business Association. I, I think that that's critical, that each year, you kind of recalibrate and talk, by talking to each other, and not just assuming or taking for granted, well, they did it last year, they'll do it this year. So that, I think that discussion every year is what is really important, so thanks.
Well, thanks. If I can add one comment about the meeting I just had with Mr. Bramhall, is we, you know, I attended, and some of you were there, this meeting yesterday where there was a briefing about the TIFF district that's going to hopefully be established down there, and this really isn't about policing, but I look at that as a tremendous opportunity for that area, that TIFF. If that TIFF is approved, I think there's going to be a lot of positive results from that, and from a policing standpoint, I think it's also, if we're engaged in what's happening down there, I think we're gonna see a lot of exciting things down in Aggieville. That TIFF is, that's a huge investment, and that's a, that's a sea change in commitment to having a vibrant area of the city that is diversified in many ways in the kind of products, services, and businesses that are located there.
Good, well, thank you very much, appreciate it.
You're welcome.
I just want, one question, I was waiting here. I always bring this up, I was on the Law Board for a few years, and I'm interested in us pursuing some electronic traffic enforcement on a very limited scale. You know, not putting cameras on everybody's, you know, stop signs, but I'm thinking school zones, you know, initially, and I was just curious about your thoughts, you know, you might wanna put that on the list for next time, because it's, it's a big question of, you know, how do you, how do you do that, and I've done some research on it, and my real thought is, and question to you, is if we did that, would it save officer time? You know, that's where I see the savings, not, not the idea of giving a bunch of tickets so that the city makes money. But, but you put a lot of officers in the school zones, and it's a safety thing, so if we put cameras there and labeled it, then they could be challenged into something else, and then maybe that would help with the budget, because it's always a personnel issue, needing more officers as the city grows, and so I was just curious about your thoughts on that.
Well, I didn't anticipate the question, I do have some thoughts on it based on some previous experiences, but you create an opportunity for me to say this publicly, I want you to know that whenever I'm involved in an enforcement effort, directing it, or focusing on something, I want you and the citizens to know that there is never a goal to generate revenue, that is not what we do it for, and that's not how I do it. It's always because there is an issue that we need to address, and sometimes enforcement is part of the answer to addressing it. As far as electronic ticket writing in terms of cameras, when I worked in Virginia, there was a 10-year piece of legislation that sunsetted that allowed 10 cities in the state to install red light cameras, and the city of Alexandria was one of those cities, and the way that was rolled out was a vendor was selected, five high accident intersections were identified where enforcement was difficult, and the infrastructure was installed. Only three cameras were purchased. There were signs up saying that there was camera enforcement, but the cameras were rotated on a regular basis by the vendor, so neither the police department or the citizens knew which intersection had a camera in it at that point. The reason why it was done that way was because they wanted to send the message that this is not about generating revenue. They could have generated a lot more revenue if they had five cameras, but they only had three, and you never knew where they were, but you knew it could be there when you went through that intersection. We saw a dramatic reduction in accidents at those locations because those cameras were there and there was signage up in advance of the intersection warning people that cameras could be there. The way that the citations worked is they were not a traffic infraction by statute, it was a civil penalty. So the vendor would collect the photographs of the violations, the only role we had in the police department was because the vendor didn't have access to this, is we had to verify the registration on the license plate that was recorded in the photograph. So all we did was we ran the tag, got the registration, and sent the address back to the vendor. The vendor mailed out the citation, which was civil in nature. If the person agreed that they had been the driver and violated the red light, they would sign it, and then they would send in the fine, which was civil. It was never reported to DMV, it didn't go on their record. Conversely, someone could say, "Wasn't me driving that car." Yeah, that's my car, but it wasn't me, and they could sign saying it wasn't them, return it without payment, and that was the end of it. That's how it was conducted. But the most important thing to know is accidents dropped dramatically at those intersections because those cameras were installed. For whatever reason, at the end of 10 years, the legislature decided not to renew the legislation, and it went away. I don't know if it's been renewed or not, I haven't, haven't monitored it. So that's my experience with it. In terms of my thoughts, I think there would need to be some sort of ordinance passed for this type of enforcement to occur, that would fall on you to do that. As a police department, whatever ordinances are enacted by you all, we're obligated to enforce or participate in to the degree that we can with the resources we're given. So that's what my response would be if you decide to go down that road.
Thank you, appreciate it.
You're welcome.
Thank you, appreciate it.
You're welcome. Have a good evening. I'll stick around in case you have anything else coming up.
All right, we'll move to Item 2, which is annual revenue and expenditure forecast for the general fund. You're gonna do this with great support, Bernie?
I'm gonna do this with great enthusiasm and enjoyment. Before I start, as you know, I lost my assistant director, Hillary Badger, who joined her husband in the state of Washington back in early January, and it's, it's been a, it's been an interesting transformation, I guess. It's, I guess it has energized me, because as I was telling Commissioner McKee, I don't have much choice but to take on some things that otherwise she would have been doing, and one of those is presenting to you tonight as a commission. Before I start, I'd like to make a couple of introductions, 'cause I'm not sure you've met both of those people. My new budget and operations officer comes to us from Vladi, she was a banking auditor, and Rebecca Doling, whose husband, by the way, is an RCPD, officer or detective, officer, sergeant, okay? And she has replaced Daniela Whitman, who also joined her husband when he was transferred down to Savannah, and so the other individual is Amy Albert, who is Senior Staff Accountant, and Amy not only helps on the budget, but Amy also runs our BID program, both downtown and Aggieville, and I can tell you that she's doing a really good job. We, we're kind of in that phase now where we begin to really take a close look at this as far as payments go and everything. The 1st of March is the deadline, there is a grace period for 30 days, and we have an unusual, larger number than we did last year at this time that haven't yet paid, but Amy is working with both the BID directors, and so hopefully that'll, that'll work itself through. If I could, commissioners, let me take you through what appears to be a long PowerPoint, it's really not, we should get through it rather quickly, but I want to, I wanna make a couple of comments before I start. As you probably know from city manager conversations this past year, we had a very difficult year. And the fund that really was the most difficult was the general fund, which I'm sure all of you know is really the heartbeat of what the city does. It covers 90, 95% of all of our employees, it is the operational fund of the city. And when all of a sudden that fund runs into physical difficulty, everybody feels it, and unfortunately, the pressure goes back to the city manager to have to make difficult decisions. As a result, I wanna spend a little bit of time talking especially about that fund, and especially as we move forward in the future, because it's not just the general fund, but since that really comprises the bulk of the city workforce, as you look ahead, we have so many projects. One of those is kind of a, I'll look back, but I'll look at Brian, potholes. That alone is going to take a tremendous amount of work, and Commissioner Butler, we were talking about that before the meeting started as well. So if I could, let me give you a quick preview of how we came out in 2018 overall. You have a copy of this, and we use this on a monthly basis to really gauge where we started, where we ended, and the revenues and expenditures and the offset that took place. I hope that's reasonably clear, there's a lot of information, and it's, I guess that's reasonably clear, not too small. I apologize if we, if you have to squint a little bit, and it's, there's quite a bit of information on some of these slides. As you go down this list, and the reason we don't cover so many of these in detail, especially at this point, where we're really talking about revenues generally, some of the challenges, I think, ahead of us, and to a degree expenditures, is because most of our budgeted funds, all 26 of them, really are doing fairly, fairly well. And I call your attention, for instance, to Fund 105, our Economic Development Fund, started with about 7.7 million in 2018, ended with about 7.8 million in, to begin 2019. And if you go down the list, you'll notice that most of those are in good shape. There's a couple of these, and we're gonna talk about a little bit more in detail, the Employee Benefit Fund, might be one of those where we actually dropped almost 50% of our beginning cash balance in 2018. These other funds, you'll notice, the Recreation and Trails, or Facilities and Trails, I think is it's more appropriately called, we didn't start with anything in 2018, but ended the year with a little over 1.8 million, and those funds, of course, are accumulating, a large part of those intended for those new facilities next to Anthony and Eisenhower as time unfolds and as those funds accumulate. No real big surprises, I think, on most of these, ended up about where we thought, and I think, again, most of these funds are, are doing quite well. We come, of course, to the Riley County Police Department and then some other funds. I will, again, call your attention to the Special Street Maintenance Fund, which Rob Otten and Brian Johnson have been using vociferously in working on these streets, and you'll notice that we spent a little more than we took in, but those are all planned, and I know that Brian has given you some updates to those, as well as Rob, and will continue to do so as that, as the time passes and those funds are being And will continue to do so as the time passes and those funds are being utilized. You'll also notice that the commission last year approved a new fund, this risk management reserve fund. It was my suggestion. It's, I think it's kind of benign at this point. We do have now $63,000, and that money accumulates from property and liability insurance in both the general fund, the water fund, and the wastewater fund that hasn't been spent. And so rather than just simply let those funds go back to beginning cash balances in all three of those, we sweep those into this reserve fund. So it's not really moving any other monies. It's just simply saying if there's money that hasn't been spent for property and liability insurance, we'll move it there. Given time, and again, you may recall the analysis that kind of prompted the establishment of this fund, given time, I think we'll get to a point where we're going to be able to pay for some extraordinary insurance cost if and when they occur and to help pay for premiums, which, of course, will help especially in the general fund as time unfolds. And then we last, we end up with our utility funds, and they're doing so well. You may recall, I don't know, I don't think any of you were on the commission at the time, maybe Commissioner Butler and Commissioner Morris might have been, but the stormwater fund was in trouble at one point. And we slowly but surely changed the whole rate structure. That was one of the impetus and one of the goals of Brian, city engineer, and it has really paid off. That fund is solid. It is no longer in fiscal difficulty, and I'm very pleased about that as well. As a recap, we ended up adding about 1.2 million or so from our January 1, 2018 balance to 2019. And so by and large, with the exception of some of the difficulties we had in the general fund, it was a good year. I want to take a moment and talk about this particular slide. These are our tax funds, property tax funds. And they're the ones that, Commissioner Butler is smiling, they're the ones that have the most, I think, concern, both for staff as well as for you as a commission. I put on the far right the 2019 budget of where we said we were going to start with cash. You'll notice that because of the actions that the city manager took in mid-2018, we ended up very strong in the general fund. We started with 1.7. Actually, commissioners, we started with 1.2, a little over that. And we added about a little less than 500,000 to that fund balance from the workers' compensation fund in order to come as close to $2 million as we possibly could. It was a difficult decision to do that. The workers' compensation fund is in, fortunately, is in very good health, but we were rather stunned that we came in that low. And we're going to, you'll see some of the evidence of why that happened as we move through this presentation. You'll notice that the employee benefit fund was planned, we planned on 300,000. That's one that we absolutely missed and only started with a little over 200,000. If you look ahead, and we won't meet again to talk about the budget until the end of May, but as we look ahead, I think you should probably anticipate there is going to be a millage increase in the employee benefit fund. On the other side of the coin, as you move down, we didn't plan to have anything carried over in the Riley County Police Department fund, which we fund, of course, 80% of their operation. We have almost half a million dollars. So I think any increase in one fund could very well be offset, not knowing where the expenditures for 2020 will be planned for the Riley County Police Department or any of these others that show a positive balance compared to where we were. But I think we can see an offset so that increase in the employee benefit fund hopefully won't be onerous. Let me go back up to the general operating fund. Initially, I've had talks with city management about what do we do with 3.2 million? The first thing you could look at is to think that we're now swimming in gravy on this fund. I'm not sure that's true, commissioners. Initially, I was hoping we could establish a general reserve fund. So we take monies, take part of these monies, and literally move them into a fund for the general fund, a reserve, and sweep them out. I don't think we can do that under Kansas law. Legal staff just look at it, and they don't believe it can. I still have some reservations about leaving that money there. I've talked to some of my counterparts across the states, and some of the things that they are doing to hold on to some of this general fund money, I'm frankly not sure they should be doing. I have some heartburn with that. We're going to have further discussions about this. And of course, hopefully, when the budget process starts the end of May, we can come back to you and give you some suggestions on how we should approach this. If we were going to do it the way I had planned, we would have started 2019 with 1.25 million. And I use that number because that would have balanced all of our revenues against expenses and would have put us in a position where month to month, we would know exactly whether revenues were coming in higher. And right now, sales taxes for two months were $144,000 ahead, a welcome thing, certainly in the year. On the expenditure side, we typically have underspent budgets in the past, anywhere from 3% to 5%. Last year, because of the action that the city manager took, and I think it was an absolutely correct action, we saved almost 10% of our general operating fund. So I'm not sure what we're going to do with this yet. I know that city manager is always interested in your perspectives as well. So we have a couple of months to plan how we're going to use these revenues and come back to you with some suggestions in the process. You'll notice that the bond interest fund didn't come in quite where we thought it would. I don't think we're going to have too many issues with that, but we'll keep you posted as well. I'm sorry, it came in better, but we won't have any issues because of the way the debt is structured right now and the fact that we haven't had as much city at large debt in the last couple of years. You've heard this before, but roughly 80% of our general fund revenues, I'm sorry.
Just a minute. Can you go back?
I sure can.
Just remind us what 2018, 2019 means if we have a beginning cash balance in 2019 at 3.2 or 3. What date was that?
Well, that actually will carry through to 2020.
Well, I mean, the start date for the calculation is not fiscal year, not calendar year.
It's calendar year. I'm sorry. It's calendar year. Yeah, our budgets are run entirely on calendar year. And so the revenues that you have here really came from savings on the expenditure side in the latter part of 2018, from June on.
So on the 3.2, we're only two months in.
Right. We're only two months in. In fact, if you look at February's cash balance, I could be happy to send that to you as well. I don't have it with me, but we have over $5 million. But the reason for that is because you always get 50% of your property taxes in January. So our balances really soar the first part of the year and then begin to trail off as the year unfolds and revenues begin to drop a little. And expenditures, of course, pretty much across the board every month, the same.
Have you got a kind of a sense right now, since we got 50% of the property tax in, what the valuation increase looks like? I mean, is it 1.5% or 2%?
No, I don't. And I wouldn't, I haven't even talked to Greg McKinney about that, Mayor, because usually it's going to take them three or four months. Probably in April, May, I'll probably start calling him or emailing him and trying to get an idea. We're at 575,000 right now for a mil. And I'm going to anticipate that if the last few years are any examples, and we're looking, of course, at building permits and other growth across the city, we'll probably not hit 600,000. I'm going to guess around 590, 595. If we hit 600, that would be great. If you go over, that would be just wonderful. But I'm thinking a little bit less than that is what I'm thinking right now.
And sales tax thus far tracking ahead?
It's good. It looks, I thought we'd be down in February. I really did. And we weren't. And so right now, that's looking good. Now, we do know we have some changes. Payless Shoes is obviously going out of business. Fortuity Downtown is going out of business. The last, if you look at that sales tax information I sent you, we did see a nice little bump in retail sales generally. And that surprised me a little bit, but the things that have been carrying us, at least in 2018, were accommodations and food sales. And retail, not so much. It was pretty flat. So whether or not we can continue to see that upswing, we'll just have to wait and see.
Okay. Thanks.
Keep in mind, the February revenue we just received was based on December sales. So we were pretty full strength there, and obviously we'll start to see some reductions, more than likely from deployments, reduced enrollment, that sort of thing.
So about 80% of our revenues come from these six sources. Those sources are bold-faced and italicized on the left. And you can see what happened in 2018 with these sources. And I put the 2019 budget up there because I want to call your attention to the fact that, and you'll see this here in a moment perhaps more clearly, but remember, and I think even our city manager has complained about this, I don't know how we could change it, but budgeting in Kansas is so odd because we have to have a budget adopted by August the 15th. We typically use that first commission meeting on Tuesday in August to adopt the city budget. So for all practical purposes, come July, we're done with the city budget. And yet we've only got six months of revenues that we have been able to plan for, and then looking ahead for an entire year that follows that you're budgeting for, and it's just anybody's guess. Because of what happened in 2018, and actually 17, and then affected us in 18, you can see that we did move down on the budget on some of those major sources. Sales taxes, we've budgeted less. See if I can do this. So you can see sales taxes is less, franchise fees is less, and municipal court revenues. And I appreciate, I appreciate the chief's comments about that you don't set up cameras or any other digital device with the intention of raising revenues. But our revenues from fines have clearly dropped, and it is the biggest loss that we've experienced in 2018. And it's taken, it took the 2019 budget to hopefully make that correction. And we'll see if that hopefully will stay about where it is currently. Are there any other questions about this? You can, I think you can see where we struggled, and especially on some of those major revenue sources. The things, of course, that bother me, and I'll be quite candid, and I know it bothers your city manager and it bothers, I think, all of us. We have a heavy reliance, obviously, on property taxes. You'll see how much property taxes have increased in the general fund in the last few years, but also on transfers. And the other revenues, that 856,000 that really kind of carried us forward, that was from our bond fees, our administrative fees for the big bond issue we had last May. So we'll have another reasonably good-sized administrative fee bump this year, about 400,000. But it was over 600,000 last year, and that really carried us forward. And that's where that large number, that 856,000, comes in. But this reliance on transfers from utility funds and the reliance on property taxes is obviously something we simply have to come to grips with at some point. It's going to be difficult, as you'll see in a moment.
Bernie?
Yes, ma'am.
Could you talk to me about municipal court revenue? If we're in the red for total of $367,000 and some odd dollars, did we budget about the same again? Did we, because the previous year we were also in the red about that much?
No, actually, Commissioner, we've not, and that's what I mentioned. Now that we have a different history to look at, we dropped the budget for municipal court revenues by almost 400,000. And if you go back to 2017 and 16, it's even more than that. So we have really come down. I think that 1.4 million is going to be more realistic to what is taking place.
I guess, are we where we need to be?
I think we are. I think we are.
Because that had almost close to a mil impact.
It does. Yes.
What are the percentages on the right-hand column?
The percentages actually on the 2018 budget and the right-hand column are to show you how those six revenue sources account for 80% of the revenues in the general fund.
Well, I'm looking at the balance at the bottom. So next to the 30 million, it says 79.7. What's that mean?
It means that about 80% of all of general fund revenues come from those six bold-faced italicized items. Yeah. So only six. We have about 100, I think it's about 120 revenue sources in the general fund, and only six, six will provide 80% of our revenues. So it's just an ongoing reminder that there's no money out there that could magically appear to make up for some of the differences that we see when something like, well, again, not to belabor the point, but when something like municipal court revenues decline, there's no other revenue source really to pick it up. And had it not been for that 600,000 in administrative fees through that bond issue in May, things would have been much more grim. We wouldn't have hit 3.2 million. It would have been much closer to 2.5 million as a result.
Well, does this mean, for example, that the general revenue in total is 36 million?
No.
If this represents 79%?
No, no. It represents, no. That 30 million, Mayor, is, that is the general fund revenues for the budget for this year. The 79.7 is simply, back to this slide, reflective that 80% of revenues only come from six sources. I probably didn't make that slide very clear, but, so in other words, in 2018, it was 80.2% from those six sources. In 2019, it's 79.7% for those six sources. Okay, I understand. I am sorry. Didn't mean to confuse you.
No, it's fine. I'm just trying to figure out the value of those percentages.
Sure. Sure. This is the slide I was referring to earlier when I said that our budgeting process in Kansas is so awkward. You'll notice in 2016, we came a lot closer the last six months of the year to meet the same revenues that we had the first part of the year. In 2017, that, those last six months took a nosedive. And as you recall, sales taxes, the franchise fees, the municipal court fines, those are the ones that took a drop and leveled off. And we were already into the 2018 budget at that time. We had it adopted before we ever knew that this was going to take place. To show you that we actually got a little bit smarter in the finance department, I'll put that on me, we noticed in 2018 that we had the same pattern, but we reduced that 2019 revenue budget accordingly. And we're able to, I think, then recover somewhat in 2018 on revenue side, and I think we'll do the same hopefully in 2019. On the expenditure side, and Mayor, this slide is for you. This is a decrement analysis where we, where it gives you a chance to really look at what happens when the four major cost categories that the state of Kansas relies on for budgeting of municipalities across the state, cities and counties. Personnel services, contractual services, those contractual being things like West Star, Kansas Gas, your insurances, property liability, commodities, the paper clips and pencils, and then, of course, capital outlay, the big ticket items for usually for vehicles and other large equipment that we we feel needs to be replaced. But you get an idea when you look at this that what especially on the increase side, what it does to a budget. So just by increasing the budget by one percent, we end up with about three hundred thousand more. And of course, if you go out to five percent, it ends up being considerably higher. Likewise, if you cut expenses, which is what happened last year, but more than five percent, actually ten percent. But typically, we hang we seem to to be in this three to five percent savings. You can see what kind of a of a boost that makes to the ending cash balances that we just talked about. The problem, of course, is that we don't know that we can always count on that kind of a savings, especially when you've got things like potholes that need to be filled and other needs across the city in terms of labor-driven services. If we just look at the 2019 budget, this is how it breaks out at a three percent increase. And I have reservations about this because I think when I've spoken to each of you individually, perhaps in some cases when you were just elected and you went through this little discussion with various city departments, I think I told you then that personnel is the cost that we have to somehow control or to recognize that you can't get away from that. And if indeed you provide cost of living merit, whatever other whatever other allowances you might make during the budgetary process. But most importantly, if we hire positions back, it makes a difference. Knowing that we're not out of the woods yet and having been through a very difficult budget year, I find it hard. I'm going to say this without looking at management, Dennis or Jared or Jason, God forbid, Jason, or Ron. So I'll stand like this. I I have I have concerns, for instance, about hiring back an assistant director. But I also understand that I'm the oldest employee working for you in City Hall. And that's probably not a wise thing to not have that second in command for any reasons, for any number of reasons. So it it becomes a real balancing act, commissioners, as we move through this budget process, knowing that these costs are real. It also leads us as kind of a segue towards the end of this presentation of things that I think we realistically have to look at as we look ahead. Because this is still, notwithstanding the difficulty of student enrollments at K-State, notwithstanding the the deployments at Fort Riley. This is a dynamic community. And there are so many positive things that continue to happen. And the city, that's all of us, we have to keep pace. I don't think we have any choice. And if we don't keep pace, I think the price down the road is perhaps even greater than what we're facing right now. So as you look at this, there's almost nine hundred thousand dollars. That right now is almost two mils that at a three percent increase to the 2019 budget, we would have to find somehow. And I've already kind of told you that I'm going to try as hard as I can to see if we can possibly hold the line on property taxes in the general fund for 2020. I've looked at the the tax lid. I think we've got some room to raise that mileage. If the commission, if city manager would agree and the city commission would approve. I'm going to try to see if we can find other ways to avoid that if we possibly can.
You and I talked about this a little bit, Bernie, but is the three percent representative year over year on the for personnel?
It is.
Step increase?
It's actually, actually frankly, Mayor, I think it's a little bit more than three percent. But it is. And yet, on the other side of the coin, you know, I look at all of our staff sitting around here, the two who work for me, and I could tell you, they clearly clearly could find other jobs and pay more money. I I'm going to tell you right now.
Yeah, I'm just trying to get a gauge on what normal looks like. If normal is three point five, for example,
Yes.
then it's a little over a mill automatically that we've got to search for.
Yes. Now, you're that's exactly right, Mayor. And and what what I think we're all trying to do is trying to find how we can how we can play this out for the foreseeable future. So it doesn't cause that discomfort and automatically go straight to property taxes and say, it's got to be property taxes that does this. And yet realizing that transfers from our utilities is is also at some point, I'm not sure, always wise to do. Our bond and interest fund, I wanted to show you this because we have a plethora of projects in the next five or six years. And I'll be quite honest with you, it's one reason why I suppose it's it's like a siren song. I find it so intriguing, the things that are going to happen in this community. I can't imagine not being part of the action, so to speak, as they unfold. But you'll notice that part of our policy for debt management, approved by this commission, not this commission, but past commissions, but you've seen it, has been to try to not issue any more debt than what we retire. And we have historically, ever since that policy was put into play, we've been about we've been on target fifty percent of the time. This six-year period here is about fifty percent, where we actually retired more than we issued in three of those six years. Our rating agencies, they like this. You can find this in your city budget from page, I think, two hundred and six. And we try to monitor these kind of things because it's it's the kind of thing that I think tells us where we're going and what we're what we're doing as well. If you look at our total city debt, you can see we've declined in the last five years. And I think that's good. I think it's momentary. Truthfully, it's going to go back up if many of these projects that at least today to date, you've given somewhat of a a green light towards, it will go back up. But at least right now, we've seen a decline. Now, on our general obligation bonds, it has gone up in 2015 and it's stayed pretty much around the sixty, sixty-three million ever since.
You gave us a chart some time ago. I'm trying to remember. Is does the downtown bonding come off twenty-two, twenty-four, twenty-six? Is that?
Yes, it does. I I I always think the thing that I'd always like to remind you. You've seen that pie chart at end, and I don't want to repeat some of these things as you've seen over and over. But remember, the property tax burden in the bond and interest fund for this debt is just a small sliver. Because we've we understand, and I think management especially, has understood how to balance revenues to make sure that we can leverage debt in such a way that we don't burden taxpayers. And I think we've been very successful, frankly, in in doing that. I don't know how this shows up at at home, but you've seen this before, perhaps. The projects that we have on the drawing board, so to speak, as we move ahead in the next five, four, five, six years is considerable. And some of these, as we look at a listing here, some of these do have their own revenue source. In fact, the very last one, joint maintenance facility, is not really intended to be GO bonds per se. All of these will appear in the bond and interest fund. But there are revenue sources or federal grants or other revenues that come with those. And most of these aren't going to occur until this 2023, 2024 timeframe. One one position we've taken years ago for a decade now is really to hold on to our temporary notes initially when we were seeing so much growth in subdivisions and we had so many developers that were building. They requested as much time as they could before those temp notes were converted to bonds in order to sell lots and sell and get their developments going vertical. Really, we did this then as a matter of course where we hold on to temp notes usually for about three years, give or take. You have to bond them before four years are up. That's state law. So we we try to get these bonded after about three years, but we hold on to them. And again, as part of that management and as the city manager has told you in the past, our temp note rates are just really low. Rates are going up. But they've been under one percent, a little over one percent. And it really is, it makes sense to hold on to those temp notes, which allows for, of course, your valuation to increase. So when these things are bonded, again, the impact to taxpayers from so many of these projects, and I anticipate many of these could be the same way, that tax impact will be minimized.
Bernie, could you go back to the previous slide of the five-year total debt history?
This one or?
Not that one. I'm sorry, that one.
I'm sorry.
So even though the you have the general obligation bonds and the total city debt, the the bonds are still a debt?
They all are. Yes, Commissioner, they are.
Combined, it would be over three hundred thousand.
Oh, no, this is part of that two hundred and forty-four.
Oh.
It is. No, I'm sorry. It's it's all part of this.
Okay.
Yes.
That's what I wanted to clarify.
No, it is. I'm I'm sorry. That
So it's not two different?
Right. I wanted to show you the general obligation bonds because, again, the tax burden in the bond and interest fund is a little over three million in property taxes. And yet, all of these bonds are outstanding and, of course, the principal and interest on an annual basis is paid. Well, it can't come from just three million dollars of property taxes. It comes from all those revenue sources that as we try to balance these things out. I'm sorry, Commissioner.
It's part of the two hundred?
It was a good point. Yeah, it's all part of that of that bottom line, bottom line. So if you look at these projects, and again, I one of these, this this last one, this joint maintenance facility is a good example. It'll be in the bond and interest fund, but as I recall, Ron may have to help me, but I think it's enterprise funds and several funds. Yeah, they're going to pay for this facility that's planned for roughly 2024. Won't again, if that's when it's constructed, you wouldn't see it hit the bond and interest fund until probably 2027 as we hold on to those temp notes and make that a project fund until we do bond it. Let me give you an example because now we're going to kind of move into this discussion. I understand there's an editorial in the Manhattan Merker tonight about the pros and cons of of a permanent sales tax addition to the one cent that we have. So this will start that discussion further. Right now, about a tenth of a sales tax, that's a tenth, which would, remember, our one cent produces about eleven million dollars. So, you know, one cent's going to produce a little over about one point three million, one tenth of a cent. And that equals about two mils on what we currently are doing right now at about five hundred and seventy-five thousand for one mil. A point three sales tax is equal to about five, a little over five mils. Okay, just so you get a little bit of a feel for this. So if we look at the levy, which is going to be a city project, we do, of course, have considerable federal funding for this. The city's portion, I believe, is right at nine million, a little over. I think right now we've been looking, at least some of the analysis I've been doing is 20 years. We could, we typically, remember, we try to hold most of our bond issues to ten. The rating agencies love that because it means we're retiring debt quickly. So that two hundred and forty-four million that was two hundred and seventy-five million, that's one reason. It's because we see a lot of retirement of those bonds every year. I put down a four percent interest rate. That's higher than what we would expect today if we went to market for bonds. But I don't not sure when this thing is bonded that what it's going to be. But you can see what the average principal and interest would be over 20 years, roughly seven hundred and fifty thousand. And the average mill levy over that 20-year period, a little over one mil. We have no contingencies, no bonding fees, and the temp notes, again, would be held for roughly three years before the project is finally bonded itself. And you get the impact on what we have currently based on current information. For a two hundred thousand dollar home, market value, about twenty-five dollars in annual property taxes. And for a small business owner, because they are assessed at a higher rate under state law at twenty-five percent of the market value, that would be considerably more. If we continue that out and look at this and know that the levy construction would begin in 2020 and should be completed in 2023, if we did issue an increase to our sales tax later this year, that likely would be effective in April. And it gives you a chance, and again, understanding that part of what we all do, and I'm looking at management as well as other administration, we talk about these things and we have to decide what the timing of all these revenues might be, especially of permanent sales tax, and of what amount. And if you do that early enough, you obviously you can accumulate funds that perhaps could be set aside. But a lot of that is a discussion that will take place among city administration to be brought to you at some point with by the city manager with recommendations. But I wanted to give you an idea of of how this, at least one of these projects, might look and how it works. Talking about the new sales tax, this is a statute, twelve one eighty-nine. You can fix that increment in one half of a tenth of a cent. So it doesn't have to be what I've been showing you or what you have in your handouts as a tenth to two tenths to three tenths. It could be in point three five, point four five, point five five, or point five, oh five. And under this statute, you can't exceed two percent for a permanent sales tax. And right now, of course, we have a one cent sales tax that is permanent. Back in the seventies, early seventies, it was established as a permanent sales tax. The purpose of it, well, short term, obviously, there could you could say that it could be used to help reduce the city levies to help offset the anticipated increase to the bond issue at three eighty-three. And I think most of us know that there will be some sticker shock when that hits property owners, all of us, most of us, and becomes a part of the USD three eighty-three mill levy. And we're looking, I think, roughly at seven to eight mils of an increase.
Can you explain a little bit more on what you mean by having sales tax offset?
Well, I I'll be quite honest with you, Mayor, and I, again, I I'll stand here so I don't have to look at Ron or other city management. I'm not sure the city has any obligation to try to reduce its mill levy because USD three eighty-three is raising theirs. I'll I'll be quite honest with you. I tend to be a purist in that regard, and I think we have enough things that are on the drawing board to say that should not be our priority or part of our strategy. Now, that said, and getting somewhat the evil eye from some of you, perhaps, I'll 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 move on. But that would be the idea.
Before you move on, I will just
I'm going to get I'm going to get chastised.
Obviously, no, I'm just going to make a couple of points. And and part of that is intergovernmental meetings at budget time when you're all curious about what the other taxing jurisdictions might be doing and 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 what others could be doing as you look at the overall impact of the taxing bodies. I can tell you, there was a time when we passed a sales tax. I can tell you, there was a time when we passed a sales tax issue for some of the schools. And so that was a very unique partnership between us and the school district where we increased the sales tax on a temporary basis to help the school district so they didn't have to raise property taxes. So this would be a similar concept where there's a period of time, I think about five or six years, isn't it, Jason, where some of their previous bond issue would go off and that would go down. But there's also a period of time where the new, new property tax from the new construction, about five, six-year period where it's going to be fairly high. And so one strategy would be as we're accumulating funds to pay for projects, some of that increase could go to offset our property taxes and in effect lowering the overall effect. Obviously, there's a lot of trust there going on between the entities to ensure that, you know, we don't get taken advantage of in a, in a situation like that. And, and so it's, it's something, a tool we have to somewhat counter our property tax, which, and our lid that, that we're working with compared to, which I'll make a point on later in the presentation.
But the, the question that arises here is that when we, when the citizens approved the 130 million, wasn't there something in there about the mil rate that would be supported?
Yes, they were very, they were very transparent about what the impact would be. And that's, that's kind of what Bernie's saying, is that, you know, the folks voted for it, they know what the hit's going to be, they, they can expect that.
I'd just be a little concerned that, you know, when we put things on the ballot and it gets approved by the citizens, how, how do you, I mean, the, the idea of us saying, well, we didn't really mean it?
The question won't indicate we'll lower the mil levy. The question would be a very generic one because it's the permanent side of the sales tax. Special questions, you know, 10 years in length, get very specific. If you recall, for our indoor facilities and parking wreck renewing, our quarter cent was very long, several lines long. The last time the city of Manhattan passed an increase to the permanent sales tax was 1982. In 1971, we passed our first half-cent sales tax. In 1982, we passed another half-cent sales tax. Those are permanent taxes. And the question in 1982 was as simple as, do you agree to raise the sales tax by one half of a percent for the general purpose of the retailer's sales tax? It, it had no expressed opinion or expressed use of that tax. In looking at the statute today, we sat down with Bill Frost and looked at just what would have to be written today, we are required to give a general purpose of how we're, how we would use that. That could be as, as simple as helping the general fund, the general operation, and the general debt service of the city. It could be very simple. And in fact, I think it would, it'd be wise of us to create a very broad use of those funds. When we talk about the sales tax for USD 383's purpose, 7.8 mils is taking 7.8 times that $25.20 and that $219.12, take that times 7.8. That's the kind of impact you're going to have or we're all going to see. Now, I don't disagree with Bernie's comment or yours, Mayor. They knew what they were getting into. But each year in this room, we talk about the cumulative, we talk about the 145 mils that are comprised of the district, the county, and the city. It's in the conversation, and it is part of our approach.
So I, I, I mean, I'm reluctant to put this on USD 383. We have a lot of expenditures regardless. We have nothing in the hundreds of thousands, we have millions and millions and millions. So if we pass something in the seventies and 82, when you say permanent, at that time, the, the conversation must have also been, this is going to alleviate some property taxes.
I'm sure it did. I'm sure it did.
And whether it's regardless of whether they had a school bond or whatever the challenges were at that time. So I think we need to move away. I feel like that's false optimism. This is just another revenue source. And because we have a lot of expenditures ahead, again, when we look forward to the next couple of decades, we, whether we are here or not, it's about how we want to fund each of those initiatives. Some of them are promoted and initiated by the city and some are not. I would rather look at the ones we absolutely need to have first, such as a levy, and look at the other ones that, you know, it's okay if we postpone some of them. And we cannot remove the personal responsibility from the state. This is the state with the sales tax exemptions, and with now they're talking about the Senate bill for, Senate Bill 22 for corporate taxation to be alleviated and removed. There isn't an extra revenue source, but there are a lot of corporations such as AT&amp;T, I mean, I have some of their notes here, AT&amp;T, ExxonMobil, corporations that are promoting the removal of some of those other taxes. Those are revenue sources we are not able to capture. So it's following on our residents consistently. So I, I just want us to be very realistic when we're talking about this. And I, I am not going to be putting this on USD 383. We just have, even if their bond initiative did not pass, we would probably still be having this discussion.
It's not a matter of putting it on them. It's a way, it's a way to talk about it with the public by, by way of looking at the total 145 mils. And it is a strategy to consider. It's not a putting a blame, it's not associating, you need to do this to offset that. That's 65 million, and those projects in, in great detail are projects that we have spent hundreds of thousands, if not millions of dollars on already. These are projects that we all have worked on, hired consultants, worked through public processes, and are now at a point where we're either moving forward with these or we're not. And in order to move forward with these, we've come up with one strategy within the lid that we can do, and that's go to the voters and ask them, you want to consider a .3? A .3 generates enough revenue over 20 years to fund all of that.
I just, I just want us to slow down a little bit because my, my problem with the permanent sales tax, I might be convinced by the time we get around to all of it, I might be convinced. I'm not convinced today, mainly because each time it is passed in any other community, including our own, there's always the property tax that's always going to be also tapped into. Even if we say today, it will offset some things. We have a lot of other challenges that we don't have control of. And as a community and as an organization and as elected officials, we need to make sure that the state doesn't pass certain things that impact our revenue sources. And I'm not sure we're being as aggressive as we need to be. If it's costly to live in Manhattan, I don't want it to be just as costly to purchase anything in Manhattan at the same time.
So I'll, I'll comment a little bit differently on that. You know, I, I think that, you know, I prefer sales tax over property tax, simply because, you know, we've got a few businesses going out of business here, and the USD bond isn't going to help those businesses. They're, they're paying a huge amount, and we raise our, our mil levy, it just makes it worse, and that doesn't make a very good economic climate, the amount of property tax a business has to pay. So, so based on that, you know, I, I lean more towards, you know, supporting the idea of, of a sales tax because, and I'm also confident that, that if we do direct that at limiting mil levy, and as Bernie's chart showed there, the, the city debt actually dropped over the past few years. As you remember, a third of the economic development tax went to the bond and interest fund, and that may have had something to do with it. So that was a, you know, a sales tax initiative that, you know, there's proof in the pudding there on the numbers that Bernie put up there, because I've been monitoring those real close since I got on the commission. That was one of my deals, was drive that amount down, and it has gone down. So, so I think if, you know, if, if we honestly apply those funds, and .3 is not a whole lot, I would prefer that over, you know, slapping a mil levy. And you could take that approach and say, okay, the voters voted for 383, they know what they were voting for, fine, so I'm not going to worry about that, pay the freight. We need this much to raise ours, let's raise ours seven mils also, see how folks like that, have a 14-mil increase in one year. So I think this is a much better alternative.
Yeah, I, I think the, there's a couple of things here. One, our obligation is to make a plan. This plan spans out ahead of us eight or nine years here, so we need to make sure, that's one of the reasons we did that chart, so we see where the revenue is going to come from to support those things. And the 7.8% that's required by USD simply means that when a citizen looks at his property tax bill, he's not likely to be happy if we raise another one or two mils ourselves. I mean, they, sometimes people have the idea that we control all of those 145 mils, but be that as it may, that just means we have to find some alternative ways to fund this. And I'm somewhat encouraged by having the sales tax available. And then, as Commissioner Butler said, as we draw down the bonds, we'll have a little bit of, particularly as you get out 22, 24, we'll have a little bit more headroom. And what you worry about is how do I pay for those bonds, which if the rate remains the same, that means that we'll be paying about the same amount as we do now if we add this in, and that will be largely paid for by this .3 or whatever we decide is needed. So I just think our real obligation is to figure this out so that we don't kind of stumble along here and don't just run into the first project and then have to ad lib.
I have a question. If the state, I just want to make sure that I haven't understood any of this. If the state passes the bill eliminating sales tax on food, is that only the state portion of the sales tax, it wouldn't apply to cities? Could they pass a bill that it applied to cities as well? Would there ever be a scenario in which we couldn't apply our sales tax to food?
I think there could be. I think that would be remote, but I think it could be.
Is there a scenario in which the city of Manhattan could decide not to apply our sales tax to groceries?
I don't-
I don't think so.
No. Because, because that, that collection of those sales taxes is done by the state, and they already have more than enough difficulty trying to figure out CID taxes and TDD taxes. And if you ask them to say that we're going to reduce like our one cent to half a cent and take it off of groceries, I, I don't, I'm not sure that they would be able to, they'd have the mechanism to do that, Commissioner.
You know, you, you wouldn't, what you could do is you could have some kind of rebate program locally, so, which the state has, but it's, it's awkward for folks to apply for those funds. The, the simpler solution would be, for example, anybody that's on food stamps, if they use their card, it would just not apply sales tax to it versus this one cent approach. You know, so you target the folks that need, that have the greatest need, as opposed to blanketing everybody on, nobody has to pay sales tax on food.
That's true, but the feds play around with food stamps every year, so I don't really like, I, so just, I guess my general comments, I actually agree with portions of all three of the commissioners on what they said. I agree with Commissioner Ready. I mean, I have, sales tax is such a regressive tax. I just, it, it gives me pause because low-income people will pay a bigger portion of their total wages towards sales taxes. I mean, it's just reality, it's how it works. With that being said, I think affordable housing is a bigger issue in the community than prices of general commodities. And the, the reality is, is when we did this budget la, when we were passing the budget last year, I looked at it and I, I didn't really see a way that there was ever a, a scenario in which we didn't have to raise the mil in the future, like personnel costs push us to a point where we have to raise the mil. So something's going to have to take us out of the cycle. I'm not sure I'm fully convinced that it's the, the sales tax right now, but I do find it interesting and I want to explore more. I, I do, as we're exploring it, would, if there were examples of other communities that did something like that, I think it would be interesting to at least explore those options because, I mean, that's, that's the general, I don't know, I just, I just have hesitation with the sales tax. And at the end of the day, I really wish the state would step up, start doing revenue sharing again, because reality, where, where we can make gains with taxes if, if the state would step up and actually pass a progressive income tax bracket, me and Charles Koch are setting in the same income tax bracket right now, and that's where, that's where the real issues with the tax system are. So I, it's really hard for me to sit here and decide what's better, property tax or sales tax, because I think they're both issues, and I wish the state would step up and just be a partner again, but I highly doubt that's going to happen. So I have a lot of hesitations with it, but at this point, it looks like it's, might be something that we have to do.
What do you got?
I got it then. Go back to the slide here.
I was just going to bring up, Commissioner, you make a good point of what other communities are doing. You know, in first-class cities right now, we rank about 17 out of 25 in our rate, our 895. We go to 13th roughly if we go to 925. The .3 added to the 895 kicks us up, you know, a few communities, our poll factor is in a very significant part of what we're talking about. That poll factor, when you look at how other communities rank with poll factor, we are in the top seven. Most of those folks take full advantage of their sales tax in those communities because they are a draw. And most of the projects we list are about keeping Manhattan a draw and fitting into our region reimagine theme of equality of place and making that investment now for that future return. The majority of those projects are about that. That's why we've spent so much time, effort, and energy on them, to position them to a point where we can execute them and keep Manhattan as a draw. If we can maintain that poll factor at 1.3, over 30% of the revenue that we receive on an annual basis of the billion dollars in sales comes from people who don't live here. Our visitors can help us pay for the infrastructure that keeps us attractive. Going the property tax route to fund those projects clearly puts it on the burden of those who own property within the community. And so much of what we've done lately with our initiatives at the ballot, where we have been successful, over 60% with both initiatives, people in our community have recognized that and allow our visitors to help us pay for the infrastructure needs that we have. So they can come to this community and enjoy the amenities that we provide, but while they're here, they're helping us pay for all those expenses.
I agree. I just don't want us to lose fact of the site that all six of those communities that are above us are not like us in regards that 50% of their population lives on student loan debt, most likely, right? They're generating most of their revenue from student loans. They're going to have to play back a bigger portion of that money in sales tax every time we raise it.
There's some interesting, yeah, there's some interesting studies out there about the buying power of students and what they bring to a community.
I agree, but most of that buying power is in the form of debt.
Or not from here.
I'm just, I just, there, I just think it's important for us to, anytime that we talk about a sales tax.
I, I'm not gonna, I, I agree with you on the, there's no argument against the regressive side of that nature.
Later, Bernie, let's go ahead and move on if we can.
Well, we won't have to come back to, I, I told, oh shoot. I told Amy, I was so proud of myself that I embedded a, a spreadsheet into this that, and she, she said, whenever you need help, just ask her, because she knows how to do this already, so. Yes. This is what our current sales tax looks like and where it goes. We mentioned 1982 for the second half cent. I was here then as the Director of Finance, and we set up a sales tax fund, which really, even though the sales tax was passed, with, as Jason said, with no real strings attached for broad use, the commission at the time felt that once that was approved, that we ought to make sure that, that we did use it for some bigger purpose, and that was to create a sales tax fund. And that was to create a sales tax fund where that half cent goes and then is used only in property tax funds. But if you'll notice, we use that, almost a third of that back to the general fund to keep our property taxes down. So we're looking at about, what, seven, seven million plus dollars in sales taxes from that one cent sales tax. And Commissioners, if you put a millage to that, it'd be over 12 mills that, that we are, uh, keeping at bay because we have sales taxes. Now again, it's a double-edged sword. Rating agencies don't particularly like this because they think that you ought to have a little bit better distribution of revenues. And we are in the general fund about 40% reliant on sales taxes, which is, I think it's, Commissioner McKee said, highly elastic. And it, uh, you know, it, it does put us at risk as evidenced back in 17 and 18, when those sales taxes began to stagnate and trail off. Um, you've seen this, you have a handout on this and for those at home that might be watching, it just shows, I just took 2018, the actual results and just simply applied those based on different percentages. Because if we pursue this idea of adding a permanent sales tax to the 1% we have, someplace on this chart is where you're going to land and realize you could go in between these numbers too by, uh, a, uh, point 0.5%. Um, Jason made the point that everything that we saw on that project list could be funded uh, by a three-tenth sales tax. And over 20 years, you're looking at over almost $67 million that could be accumulated uh, and clearly would have a dramatic effect. Now, the presumption is, I hope, that we're not looking just at projects, uh, that we are looking what the longer term would be. And that is some kind of a new revenue source or an additional revenues, revenue source for the general fund especially, uh, that we could, um, help augment operational cost in the future. Um, that covers that issue. Are there any questions, Commissioners? I do have a couple of slides on another issue that I think you wanted to, to look at.
I do. Uh, before we go to, is that social services is the next?
Yes, it is.
Okay, before we go to that, I do want to hamper on this just a little bit longer.
Sure.
Um, the chart that showed the other cities, um, comparable or more than us in, in sales tax. Uh, first I, I, I want to say I am in favor of all the projects we are working on in the city. Just because I am not in favor of a certain revenue source does not mean I am an anti-growth or anti a project. When I assumed growth and when I ran for City Commission, um, it was because we were growing so nicely and developing and reinventing ourselves consistently in all the partnership we've had. But with that growth, I also anticipated more revenue coming in. When you have more growth, you want more revenue to come in to take care of your investment. The return on investment is what we were looking at. Um, so each year, we keep talking about either property taxes and now we're adding in sales tax. And I'm pretty sure even if we add in the sales tax, we're still going to talk about property tax. Unless you say somewhere, we won't be talking about property tax increases for the next five years. Then I would be okay with it, probably. But I don't see that happening. So my only pain and reluctant nature in this discussion is that I want to see where all of that revenue is going to be coming from. Why are, why are we not seeing more return on our investment in all of these millions of dollars we're putting forth? Manhattan has been very lucky so far, but only because our citizens have approved a parks and trail sales taxes, sales, uh, street maintenance sales tax, a USD 383 bond initiative. They've been very pro and on board, but we can only test them so far. And the eight-point, what is that eight-point, uh, how much is that? Nine-five?
Eight-point nine-five.
So in several of our areas, it is 9.75. Whether it's downtown or it's in the McDonald's area, whether it's in the Louisville area, we have several pockets that it is 9.75.
9.45, I think.
Four-five. In some area, more than nine.
Yes.
Let's just say. And the CID will kick in for the town center in April and that would be 9.7?
9.7, yes, 9.7.
9.75. So I just want us to make sure we have a clear picture of what we're talking about. And, um, it's good to have a discussion, but it's not just good to have a discussion so we all agree on the same thing. I think there's some fundamentals here we have to address. Uh, sales tax mainly impact low, uh, low and middle-class, um, middle-income folks. The other groups, whether it's nonprofit schools, whatever it is, they have loopholes that they can jump through to save some more money. And it falls on your regular residential taxpayer who have childcare they have to take care of or who have other car maintenance needs or health insurance needs and all of these other, um, expenses that are coming to them as a burden. So that, I think it's okay to discuss what we're discussing, but I don't want it to come off as though somebody's anti-growth. That's not what this is.
And I, I, I don't, I didn't take it that way, Commissioner. I think what, what Jason was saying is certainly, again, worth probably repeating, that when you look at this chart, having sorted it then by that pull factor. And incidentally, that pull factor started with Dave Darling here at K-State. The state has now incorporated that. And, uh, in fact, I checked the website today because they update that presumably in January, but the state is never quite as, as, uh, as quick as I'd like them to be. So sometime in the next month or two, uh, those numbers will be updated and it'll be very interesting to see if we still have that, that draw. And I presume that we will. Um, and that's, I think it's an important component of everything that you talked about, Commissioner Ready, just now. Uh, and that economic vitality moves forward in the face of a declining student enrollment uh, at K-State and deployments, uh, over at Fort Riley. We've been through those before. They have had an effect on sales taxes. And, uh, like I said, so far we're, we've experienced two good months and I, I'm hoping that it'll continue.
You see, I, I see the, you know, the, the question there. In my mind, you know, if I support the sales tax, which I prefer over property tax, my expectation is the mill levy won't go up. I mean, that's why we're doing it. Otherwise, why would I support it? It makes, it makes no sense. And I, I know I hear the concern all the time. People say, oh, sales tax affects, uh, you know, the low-income people more than everyone else. But, but I tell you, the property tax is killing folks around here. People are leaving town. I've got friends that have just packed up, moved to South Dakota because it's just too much. And the business end of that is so much higher. And so when I look at the economic impact of the sales tax vice, uh, you know, what the property tax does, because that gets passed on to renters and everybody else. They don't always see it, but it always goes there. And so that mill levy, you know, keeping it under control so that it, it doesn't, you know, jump up five, six, seven mills in a year. If we can keep it flat or the small increases we've had to make, that's what my expectation is on the sales tax. And you know, even when I looked at, you know, the state, they're saying, okay, they're going to reduce that, you know, tax on food. It's 1% is my understanding.
Yes.
So what does that mean? You go to Dylan's, you spend a hundred dollars, you got one dollar extra. That's going to do what? It'll buy you a bag of candy they got on sale for a buck. It, it's just not huge. The, the property tax impact is going to have much, much greater return, especially on the businesses. Cause you look at those business taxes and, and they're outrageous. They pay more than the average property owner. And I think, uh, you know, their margins get smaller and smaller as we, as we get up there in total between the county and the school and, you know, the city to 145 mills. So I think this is a, a good plan. And, and it's probably the, the best way to go in my mind, though I'd prefer not raising any taxes. You know, sales are otherwise. But, but, but what can you do? And then you, you talked about the employee fund. And if you look at those increases to keep qualified employees working for the city, the growth won't pay for the increase in the wages. Just haven't seen that over the years. I've always thought we should just base our budget, as Commissioner Ready said. If the city grows and we get an extra $800,000, then that's all we spend. But, but nobody's been able to make that work for the seven years I've been here, basically. And so, and I look back on that economic development tax and we, we had quite a, an argument to get it so that we could dedicate part of it to the bond and interest fund. But, but again, I'll go back to that chart. I think that proved the point. It does work. And that was a sales tax directed specifically to affecting the mill levy. No one's talked about that, but that amount of bond and interest money has gone down. And as a result, the mill levy hasn't gone up as much as it should. So that's what my expectation is here. If we can get people to vote for this and do it, then the expectation is that the mill levy will stay relatively flat.
I, I think you've all seen this. If you haven't, send me an email. I'd be glad to send you a copy. Um, I, I keep a running total of those mill levies over the last 20, 30 years. And I can tell you, everything is sickly. We had a six-year stretch when indeed our valuation was going up five to 8%. Sales taxes were increasing annually at five to 8%. And for six years in a row, we reduced the mill levy and actually had a bona fide tax decrease one year, where we actually levied less of property taxes than we did the previous year. Uh, so all of these things do work. I think the big picture, and I think that's part of what Jason was saying, the big picture down the road is what we really, hopefully, as a city administration and governing body, will keep their eye on because what we do today is definitely going to have an effect three or four years from now, when perhaps things are better. But we'll be looking back and saying, if we would have done this, I would have done that, so.
I just, real quick, I have one last comment on this.
Yes, please.
Cause I just, I want to make sure that people know, especially for me, that I don't want to be flippant about this subject. I, um, it's fortunate that maybe a dollar isn't much to Commissioner Butler, but for a lot of people in our community, a dollar is a lot. I have $20 in my bank account until Friday on payday. So a dollar does mean a lot to a lot of people in our community. And the, the notion that low-income people, um, are more affected by sales tax increases than other people isn't just a grumbling that some of us have. It's a simple math on how people spend their money and what portion of their spending goes towards taxes. So I want to make sure that the public knows that not all of us are being flippant about this subject. I'm concerned about property taxes just as much as well. But anytime we have conversations like this, we need to bear those things in mind and who's going to bear the brunt of it. Um, and sales tax tend to affect those communities more than others.
I'm always concerned about, um, property taxes. I'm also obviously concerned about sales tax. Um, I think the point three sales tax is probably the most convenient way out. Uh, but I, uh, that the tax lid, as we've talked about, I'm glad to hear you suggest that you have that under control.
Did I say that, Commissioner?
If he said that, he misspoke.
Yeah. Or it wasn't as, as pointed as, uh, I would have expected. Had it, let's say that. Um, I also am concerned about those things that are not apparent in our budget. And last week's, uh, meeting about burying electrical lines and that might cost $2 million uh, are the, uh, off-the-budget kind of things that also cause us to have issues for those things that are routine and that we expect to happen. Um, and so there's no go-to place for some, and, and there'll be others, there always are. We, it's impossible to have a crystal ball. And although I wish, uh, our friends that asked for the money could see the, in the ball a little further. Um, it, you know, I suppose if we have to, that maybe, I, I just think that may be what we have to do. But I don't think it's going to solve all of our problems. I'm a worrier and I do worry about the, uh, number of deployments, the enrollment at K-State being down. The ag economy right now is, um, pretty, pretty, in, in difficulty with tariffs and, you know, and we have no control over that kind of, uh, those kinds of issues. Uh, we don't have control over a whole lot. We're kind of on the receiving end, especially as long as we are dependent on, on sales tax. Um, property taxes are more dependable and, uh, you can, you know what they're, you have a better ability to know what they are. Sales tax, uh, taxes are a month-by-month discovery sometimes. So, uh, I know we're watching them closely. I, uh, I, I can see that the current, um, positive sales tax, uh, for December, uh, when there were still quite a few people in our community, I just think that we have some months to go here before fall, when at least the, those that are deployed return. I appreciate, actually, uh, your creative thinking, so, thank you.
Including my controlling the tax fleet.
Exactly.
Thank you, Commissioner.
My assumption here is Bernie and staff that when, as we move down the road here, we're going to have a close examination, so we'll be able to say, here's what, when you look at all those projects, here are the years of commitment and so on, and then here are the various ways you pay for them. And by the way, here's what we think about point one, point two, point three as being able to satisfy at least part of the demand for the resource to pay for them. So, um, I mean, we, we have kind of esoteric discussions now, but we're going to have to get down into the meat of the matter in order to sell it anyway. So appreciate the discussion.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, the second issue, um, I'm going to let, uh, City Manager and you as a governing body, I guess, kind of run this because I'm not sure what to say. Uh, talking about social services budgets, you already have seen this in terms of both the purpose and the definition of what, and it's a, it's a longer, um, um, page obviously than just this. But this summarizes that. Currently, if you look at the far-right column, this is what we're looking at. And you can see the history that follows before that, uh, in terms of general fund monies that have been spent for social agencies, including other payments. Uh, the Good Neighbors Program, Flint Hills MPO and, uh, the Flint Hills Area Transportation. Um, the MPO is a little bit of a, of a misnomer because so much of that is reimbursed. Um, we just act as a conduit, an administrative agent of, uh, for, well, for the MPO itself. And that's, those are, represent our dues that come out of the general fund. The other side of our funding history, uh, from other funds, uh, is a little bit all over the, the gambit here. And, uh, whether or not that needs to be discussed, I don't know. But it, it gives you an idea of where this fund, money has come from and how this plays out. And with that, Commissioners, I'd be happy to let you carry the conversation on that and to sit down.
I don't have a problem with that. Can you put that one chart back up there?
I sure can.
Cause this has been something I've been interested in for many years. And I, I don't, I don't want to call it social services budget because that's not what my issue's been. It's outside agencies and it's, it's how we fund them. And this gets right into the whole point of the general fund. Anything that, you know, the outside agencies funded by the general fund. So the more money we put in there, the harder it is for everything else. And I also understand the issue of, you know, we want to support the social services. So what I've wanted to see us do is, is basically say, listen, let's limit outside agencies' funding to one mill every year as a consistent budgeting principle. Now that'd be $575,000 roughly, if we use last year's number. This year it could be high as, you know, five, nine-oh. Now, one way to make that work, and we've already done that, uh, for some of the outside agencies, like, you know, Aggieville Business District and Downtown Manhattan and the Arts Center and Wolf House and all those things, we put in the Convention and Visitors Bureau, which means it's not in the general fund. And it's funded and everybody seems to be happy with that. Now what I'd like to do is take the MPO and the Flint Hills Transportation and fund it out of economic development. There's $7 million sitting there and this would put a minor dent in it when you look at the amount. But then what that would do is, it would then leave the only outside agency funded from the general operating fund as a social services budget, which could then be as high as $575,000, which is an increase. That's what I propose. It's pretty simple. And, and the argument would be, oh, we don't want to put it in economic development. Well, we're, we're funding ATA at twice what we used to. With the MPO's input on that, they did a pretty good job of restructuring those bus routes. And I've been looking at that and I've talked to some of the businesses. And the argument that we're driving people to work seems valid at this point. A lot, a lot of people take that bus to Florence and, and that's how they get to work in the morning. And so I think you can make the case, that's clearly economic development. And then the And then the MPO is clearly economic development, so let's fund it out of there. We got seven million dollars just sitting there. And if we really want to get a return on that, and we're not getting a great return on investing in selected businesses, you know, as Commissioner already said, the, the increase in growth doesn't seem to translate in anything. So why not use that money and support things? Everybody seems to like ATA, so let's support it with that. And then this would free up funds for social services, be as high as five hundred and seventy-five thousand perhaps. And of course, that doesn't affect the Special Alcohol Fund. That's another four hundred thousand. So you've got over a million you're putting into social services, and the end result, if, if we were to execute this, would be that we'd have less pressure on the general fund, which, which is what I've been talking about the past few years. And, and I think this would be a great compromise. It, it supports ATA, it supports social services, it takes care of the MPO cost, it takes pressure off of the general fund.
The, if, if you take those things out that are on the right except for the first one there, you end up with the ability, if you're going to kind of peg it to a mill, you end up with about a hundred and twenty thousand dollars that you can distribute across those agencies. So what's the general feeling here about the landing spot that we, we believe in for the MPO and the ATA?
We don't set the budget for the MPO. Yeah, I mean, the MPO.
No, I mean, it's not the budget. It's where we want it to.
Oh, come out of.
How we want to fund it and which, out of which pocket, yeah.
Well, I didn't know about the idea of the other two coming out of EcoDVO, so I honestly don't have an opinion on that right now because I don't feel like I've had much time to process that. I thought about the social services side, but those two, I don't know if I can give you an opinion on in the moment.
Well, the, I appreciate the, whoever did the social services write-up. I thought the coverage of that was really good this year. They had, you know, the, what they do and then the percentage that comes from the city and the listing of where they get the rest of their funds. A lot of them are working very hard on grants all the time, so I think the highest one we had was twelve percent, maybe I've forgotten, but some of them are percent and a half or two percent of their budget, so. So Bernie, when, when do we ordinarily get to this, so we have to decide where to put these things? In other words, if, if we want to tell you where, where the ATA budget should go, when is the, is it now?
Well, our first budget work session is the twenty-sixth of May, I believe, but towards the end of May, and that would be where I think when the discussion starts, but you could certainly give the City Manager direction and we can start that process.
Historically, we've waited even till the public hearing in August.
Yeah.
To make some of those determinations, so.
Well, we have, and we have that third work session, remember, that is devoted to the outside agencies as well.
Right.
And that includes SSAB and Adibus and some of the others.
Yeah, see, my hope was that we, we could come up with some, you know, plan to, to do this upfront, so we don't have to worry about it in August. It's just that simple. Because I really like the way the, the Special Alcohol Board is able to handle it because they know what their budget amount is. They know it upfront. We can't control it, and they just allocate it. And so this would do the same thing. It would basically say, okay, you know, Social Service Advisory Board, here's what a mill is. It could be as high as six hundred, you know, depending on how it comes out, and you can't spend more than that. You know, have a nice day. And then they figure it out and, and it's a piece of cake. And it works pretty much like the Special, you know, Alcohol Board thing. But that, that's all based on taking ATA and the MPO and saying, okay, let's take a little bit of that economic development money, and there's a lot of it there, seven million, for the next couple of years, and use it for that. And, and I think it's a, it's a great solution to the problem.
I have a question. If we did, if we did say we want to tie social services to one mill, is that a resolution or ordinance that we have to pass, or is it just direction that we give you?
It could be either. I mean, just traditionally, if you've taken a formal resolution, that's, it can be undone by a subsequent commission, but it's more of a policy statement as opposed to making a motion in annual budget.
I mean, I guess I'm asking because if we don't vote on anything, then we're still doing the same thing that we do every year, right? We're still saying, how much should we fund social services? And this year we just decided it was going to be a mill. But then next year, the, I mean, the commission could do something totally different, not even have to vote, right? Like, they could just totally ignore that we ever even had this conversation.
On, on the one hand, if you set a target of one mill. On the other hand, if it is a mill, then the, the mill determines the actual amount in there. In other words, if it goes up two percent, that's what you have to put in SSA. If it goes down one percent, if, if it's a target, you're then on or about. But at least you can give something to SSA as, as something to plan for. So, for example, if we limit just those above that other, and then you tell them that we're planning on having five hundred and seventy-five thousand in a mill, that would be just like the Special Alcohol, you'd have a target shoot at.
Then if we're not voting on anything and we're just having a conversation about giving SSAB a hundred and twenty-some thousand dollars more in this upcoming budget, then I'm for that. My only hesitation on this in terms of, and, and if that's, this is a subsequent conversation that's going to happen every year, then my only hesitation on voting on anything was voting on an order, a resolution or ordinance that use the words capped or limited, because I do think that there are scenarios that could play out that would make a commission maybe invest more if the mill were to go down or evaluations were to go down. But if we're not voting on anything and we're just talking about this next year, absolutely, I'm fine with.
I, I probably.
Has gotten increased in a while, so.
I probably should add too that Amy, our senior staff accountant, is doing double duties. It's on both, works with both Special Alcohol and SSAB. And it's probably something that if the direction is going to be for 2020, that this is where the commission wants to go, the sooner we know that, probably the better, because when she meets with these boards, she can give that word out. And indeed, there may be those members that are watching this meeting tonight and sharpening their pencils, saying if this happens, then I'm going to change, you know, the allocation request that I might have made otherwise.
And finding a way to give them a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollar increase would make me a lot more likely, at least to feel better about supporting a sales tax or the conversation of another permanent sales tax increase to show that we're investing on both ends of the city.
And of course, the, the premise on that though is you have to understand where a hundred and twenty-five thousand comes from. It comes out of, you know, moving ATA to economic development. But, but, but I, I personally think it's a great balance, you know, having looked at this. And I know the, the Social Services Board did a good job trying to keep their budget down, and they always want, you know, a few more dollars. But, but I could see us maybe doing a resolution just to say, hey, make it clear, this is what our policy is. And my assumption would be that the mill levy will not go down. Okay, because, because you're right. That's a good point, that, you know, if all of a sudden the mill levy went to half, that, that's not what the intention is here. But the mill seems to always increase every year. And so I could see that as a built-in increase to the social services budget almost permanently. As the value of a mill goes up, like, last year it was five seventy-five. This year, it could be as high as six hundred thousand. Significant increase every year. And, and I think that addresses the issue that a lot of people have talked to me about on, on social services, and then puts them in par with, you know, the way the Alcohol Board handles it. Go ahead.
Good evening, Commissioners. I just wanted to let you know that if we are going to be making a decision on something like this, ideally SSAB would like a decision by about mid-May. That's when they have their deliberations. So if you guys are kind of looking for a timeline of when you would want to make a, a for-sure decision on that, that would be what would be most beneficial to them. But as was previously mentioned, that change can be made clear up until the time that the budget is passed, but we will be hearing, or we will be hearing presentations from agencies the first couple of weeks of May, and then they make their deliberations after that. So that would be the kind of timeline that they would be looking for.
Thank you. I'm, I mean, I'm willing to have a conversation about having the agencies on, within a mill or something of that sort, but the Special Alcohol Tax did go down. The revenues source has gone down the past few years.
It will probably continue to go down.
They're going to keep going down. Yeah. So they're held accountable to only those funds, and that has decreased. My, I think right now, the way the Social Services Board works is they're very dedicated to the organizations, and they do a lot of homework, and they're putting in, they're allocating funds based on need and matching grants. I don't think having any kind of, you know, one mill or whatever it might be. I think right now, the way they're working, going through each of those applications, is benefiting the community. And I think that needs to stay there because some years they might need more, and some years they may need, you know, four hundred and forty-seven thousand, whatever it is, but it needs to be based on what they need for each of those organizations, and that should be the driving factor as opposed to, oh, we have six hundred thousand dollars coming in. We can use all of it, or this is how much we have. That's, that's a different way of thinking because you feel there's a sense of urgency that you need to spend that much because that's how much is there, as opposed to this is what you need and this is what we will give you to fulfill those needs. Because the Special Alcohol Tax did go down, and they still have needs, and they don't have anywhere to go to. I'm open to the idea of moving the MPO and Adibus to EcoDVO because I do think it's economic development. Again, I'm not set on it. I'm open to more discussion on, on both of those issues.
As a reference, the four years that I sat on SSAB, including the last year, there wasn't a year that we didn't make cuts to keep under that one percent because there was a real, real fear from SSAB members that if we sent a budget to the commission that was higher, that cuts might actually be deeper. So they kept it under that. So agencies have consistently asked for more, and we have said no. I, I've harped on it a few times, but KSU Child Development Center has been asking for an additional infant-child scholarship now since I've been involved in city government, that we've told them no every year. So I, I don't think that if we tied this to a mill and there was six hundred thousand dollars setting there, there's, there's, they're going to feel like, oh, we, like, spend, use it or lose it. I mean, there, I think there's an actual need there for many of those agencies. I mean, if you look at Manhattan Emergency Shelter, I mean, it's heavily used all the time, but costs of, cost of goods and services have gone up for them, but they've been asking for the same thing probably further back than 2016 and have asked for an increase because they're hesitant to ask for more because they're scared how the commission and the body will react. So I, I think the need is greater than what's being presented there, and we should be tying it to a mill and giving them a little bit of increase that we have in the last five, six years.
See, I, I agree with that. I've, I've always felt like, you know, the need is always going to exceed our ability to pay. That's what the problem is. I, I mean, you know, if we, if we were to build an emergency shelter that housed five hundred people, it'd be full. That's just, that's just how it is. And, and I've, I've been really impressed with the, the way the Special Alcohol Board and the Social Services Board members have been able to sit there and constrain that budget because we've asked them to do a really tough job. And Jared was there for four years, and John Ball tried to, tried to keep a handle on it, but it just cannot be open-ended. And, and I think this is a, a great compromise, you know, a mill's going to, going to actually be an increase if we move those others down there. And, and, and my assumption again is just like if we raised the sales tax, that that mill levy will not decrease. If it was to decrease, then we got to jump back and punt, relook how we handle that. I agree with that.
I think that when, when first raised the issue, the issue of capping social services at one mill, I was kind of receptive. I thought, well, I suppose we could do that. But the more I've thought about it, the more I consider it like the tax lid. And it's almost punishing. I, I think our Social Services Board has done a wonderful job also, and they have kept it in check by discipline and by fear, whatever it is. But it's not, I'm, I'm, I grow concerned when I see other, other items under what's called social service agencies because I don't consider the ATA and our transit system, brand-new, that we've had five years, that's, that's, you know, still a fledgling in a lot of ways. It, it, it would be so easy for, to have issues there because it is still, I don't know the right word, is just a, you know, delicate kind of balance. But I don't want, I, I, I think it matters what we call things. And transit does not belong under social services. And, let's see, some of these other things are, are under the social service agency definition or header. And so special parks is under there. This is, it's just not clearly broken out what, what these are. And I also don't think that just because, so for, for 2019, the, the social services budget request, strictly social services, is at four hundred and forty-seven thousand dollars. That is not an issue with regard to how it stacks up under a, a one-mill levy. So I don't think there's an issue here. I think it is, it's how we keep changing the, changing, putting topics in, taking them out, moving them around, and, and, and creating a problem. So I don't support the one-mill levy concept, and I think we have to find a way. We cannot just say we're going to spend a hundred and forty-eight million dollars on concrete and metal and tangible items. This is a, an intang, these, these social services are an intangible kind of a concept that are necessary in a community like Manhattan, and I just think we have to support them.
And I want to clarify, it, it is crystal clear what these accounts are because when I started speaking about this, we have outside agencies. That's the big umbrella. The Social Services Board is a box inside of that. Okay, so ATA is not defined as a social services. It was, I think, eight years ago, but we, we tossed it out of there. So it's pretty clear what social services are. That's the top of that. The other programs are outside agencies. So the idea of the one-mill, again, is to, that would increase the social services budget, if you just look at the numbers, by at least six figures, a hundred thousand dollars, right? Pretty, pretty clear. And then it would redirect some economic development funds somewhere else. And what it does is try to get consistent budgeting. I think if I was on the Social Services Board, I'd prefer to have at least a target number, as Commissioner Dodson said, something I could work with instead of open-ended because you know everybody's going to show up thinking we got a platinum credit card, just give us as much as we want. And, and that's all I'm looking for here, and I've, I've said that for many years. It's just consistent budgeting and make it clear upfront so that our boards, our city boards have guidance, and they don't go out and go in one direction and then we do something else in August. And, and, and that's my understanding of it. So to me, it is clear. ATA is not a social service. It never will be. And it, and it doesn't prevent anyone from coming in and making a case, say, three years from now, that one mill at six hundred thousand isn't enough because there's some catastrophe. There's nothing that stops the commission from addressing that. The idea here is consistent budgeting upfront, and I know for this year, I think they'd be quite pleased if they got one mill and we were able to move this into economic development.
So as we move towards May, is the general feeling that these, at least those last two, the ATA and the MPO, can shift, and then we would strongly consider additions to the part above that to some level that's approaching a mill? I mean, giving people a hundred thousand more dollars ought to be. dollars ought to be a step in the right direction, I would think.
For social services and one-mill, as long as I'm not voting on anything that says capped or limited, that's more of a permanent fixture, then I'm fine for tying them to a mill budget for this year's conversation. In terms of the MPO and ATA, I would say I'm tentatively supportive of that, but I would like to have a conversation with both of those entities in the chamber, for that matter. But I would say, right now, I'm leaning towards yes.
I don't think it's a matter of the ATA funding being under the social services slash other funding, or being in economic development. I see it as part of our budget. And it doesn't have to have that kind, we don't have to have these discussions about ATA every year. We don't have a discussion every year about some other topics that are standard kinds of, of items that we budget for. So it's not...
So you want to keep ATA under social services?
No, I do not.
Okay.
At all.
And do you favor raising the amount that we are likely to provide to the, to the SSAs remaining above the line?
They're well under the line right now.
I know.
I, I think it's a, an answer where there's no question, kind of thing.
Well, I'm just simply going on what others have said about them being maybe somewhat artificially constrained. It doesn't, I mean, my view is there is always a need. I mean, any of these seem to be desperate for funding.
The Chamber of Commerce is desperate. We have other funds and outside agencies that ask, KSU State wants 2 million for underground power lines.
Just talking about SSABs.
I know you are, but I'm trying to balance the, the need, what, what, the constraints that are, we're talking about applying to SSAB, and these other, also, or these other categories, to other areas where we don't exercise constraint. That's, I'm just trying to talk about the balance here.
Just for perspective, if we don't tell them that they can shoot for a mill, they're going to come back with a budget that's around 450,000, whereas we tell them, this year, you have approximately a mill, they have up to 575,000 to work from. That's a substantial increase. So if we don't tell them a mill, they're going to come back with a budget not much bigger than what we have here, which means they're going to cut items that social services have been asking for, for years, since I've been on there.
I don't think we have told them in the past how much total they could come in for.
It's because we're, they're constraining it down there. That was, that's been one of my concerns for a long time.
So this discussion will be opening it up, like the floodgates, for people to ask for more. And so that's not exactly what I'm after at all. I want us to assert some discipline. I think, actually, it looks like it hasn't even gone up with inflation. Some of those agencies are, are just flatlined, and are thankful just to get that. So.
I just want to make it clear that this isn't necessarily what they requested. This is just what the board determined that they would get for that year. So it may be flat for some of them, because they've determined, they may have requested more each year, but the board determined that that's all they could allocate to that agency for that year, for multiple years.
I think I know that from Jared, yeah.
Thank you, yeah. I think Linda understands perfectly well what everybody's talking about. I don't think anybody else needs, I'm sorry, I don't mean you. I don't think she needs to be explained to what the mill means and what it is we're discussing. I think she completely understands it. And I, I, we don't have to actually make a decision tonight, as far as, you know, whether we're setting or whatever it is. It's worth having a discussion. But at the same time, we have never, at least during my tenure here, we've always respected the work of SSAB and the commitment they have made to each of those agencies, and their requests. And we've had lots of discussion, but it's never been about, you know, here, this is how far you can go, or this is how low you can go. They came with their, with their needs, and typically, we have been very respectful to the needs that are being met there. I don't think, I'm not in favor of have, discussing whether we need to have it to a mill right now. To not, I'm not, I'm not comfortable making that decision tonight. I think they need to do what they have been doing. I am comfortable with their requests and how they've been going through the whole process for each of those agencies. And whatever request they come with, it might be within a mill, it might be over a mill. In past years, I've been here when it was over a mill at times, or close to a mill. I think those discussions need to happen. So I am not going to be making a decision about a mill limit for them. As far as MPO and ADABUS, I'm comfortable with them being in Ecodivo, unless there's a reason for it not to be there. I, I think they do serve a fundamental need for businesses, and small businesses, as well as larger businesses in our community, as well as just getting around in Manhattan, Kansas. More young, more young professionals are coming in without cars, more students are coming in without cars, and I think that provides a service for them at the same time. And that's where I stand as far as the SSAB. I'm not going to make a decision about should we have it under a mill, or a mill, or whatever it might be. I think the work they've been doing, they've been doing really well, and holding them steadfast to their commitment to the agencies. And, and that's where it should be, is to the agencies, and how to do it within that process.
I think it's easy for us to respect their wishes, because they're doing the hard work for us. Like, I, I mean, if we don't tell them they have a mill to shoot for, that conversation will be, keep the increase within the evaluation rate, and then they'll do the cuts. And then they come up here and present it to us, it's under the total evaluation rate, so we pass it every year. But I, I, I don't know if you all realize, like, how much they're cutting from these agencies' requests. It's a big amount. And they're doing it because they don't, if they brought the total of what we were asked for every year, it would require all of us up here to make the hard decisions. And right now, I, I don't know, it frustrates me, and I've said this before, it frustrates me that we have those at the lower level, because all of us can run around and say, we support social services, and we'd love to see increases, but at the end of the day, it's a board of non-elected officials who are the ones making the cuts and making these hard decisions, when really, we should be telling them, shoot for a little bit more money. We can tie this to one mill for one year, get 125,000 more, and they'll finally be able to start to fund some of the things for the last four years, they've repeatedly had a cut, because they don't want to move those decisions up here, because they're afraid of what's going to happen. So I think it's, I think it's really easy for us to set up here and say, well, we've, we've allowed them to present to us whatever they want every single year, and this is what they've come with. But the reality is, those cuts and those decisions are being made further down, because they're scared of the repercussions of bringing a full budget up here.
And, and I think you're 100% correct, because I know, you know, John Ball was head of the committee for many years, and the guidance we sort of gave him was stay under the tax lid. And that's what they did. So they, they've been working under constraint. And, and so that's why, you know, it's surprising to me that, you know, everybody wouldn't jump on board and say, fine, let's, let's give them that mill for this year. And then as long as everybody agrees to move these other outside agencies into economic development, it's a wash on the budget. It's a win for everybody. So I'm going to, go ahead.
I was just going to say, this has been a great discussion, and I think there's two topics, then, that we need to bring back. That is, what is the impact on moving those to Ecodivo, so we can have that discussion, get it nailed? And then, kind of, what do we think about the SSA total? We ought to have that conversation with the, with the committee, so that we know the degree to which they may or may not have been constrained.
Well, one of the things we could do is just provide you with the totals of the ASs without any cuts. I mean, we've got the records of agency requests, but without any cuts, where the starting point was for the SSAB. So that could be some comparative data that we could add to some of these annual columns, for your consideration. I want to jump back, Commissioner McKee. You asked me, is there a way that can define what that is versus just a commission resolution or an ordinance? And one of them that pops into the mix of that is, it could be part of your sales tax question. If the voters approve that, that puts that component in there. That, the vote, whether you ask it as a sales tax, or even a property tax. That would be confusing to mix those two, but you could set a, and not a, not a maximum, but you could say, you could reserve a certain amount of minimum that will be go, go to social services. And that would be in place for, if you did it permanently, over 10-year, or however you did it. But we talked about this being a permanent tax. So voter, vote of the people would be a way to solidify a percentage or an amount, or whatever that case may be.
I think that's, I think that's interesting. I mean, the general concerns, yeah, the, the general concerns that I always hear is limiting or capping it, and what precedent is the city commission setting. But I'm fine with starting to set, I mean, raising this to one mill, because right now, the precedent for the last 10 years has been, don't come to us with a bigger increase in the evaluation. And I think that's a worse precedent than potentially tying this to a mill. So, or an approximate mill, and if the situation comes up where we start to have another discussion in five to 10 years, and we need more, then we need more. But I would like to see them get a 120,000 increase, instead of a 15,000 one that they've got for the last 15 years.
I think the other piece that might come into consideration as part of the, the budget in some of these areas, it will be an evaluation of that special alcohol budget, because based on the legislature's action to put those increased sales in grocery stores, it's going to re, the forecast is that that fund is going to go down. And so, again, you're, you're going to start collecting it through your regular sales tax, but it's not highlighted. So you don't have it in that fund that comes directly from the state. So that gets difficult from an analysis standpoint. But it's, you will recall that those requests far exceeded anything in the SSAB that wasn't being met, as far as the need was.
So now would be the time for, to call for public comment, if anyone would like to come forward and make a comment. We're glad to hear from you.
This is Sarah Barrett. She's actually our current board chair for SSAB. I don't know if she wanted to say a few words to you guys?
Good evening, commissioners. As Commissioner McKee indicated, over the past couple of years, I've now served three years, or going into my fourth year. And we have operated under what I believe is maybe an implicit level of concern related to how much we can fund, and knowing that many of these groups, these agencies come to us on a regular basis, they do have larger needs, but understand the constraints that we work within, and have tried to be receptive to that and acknowledge that, but knowing that there's a larger need. But for the board, there's a difficult decision, and knowing that, I think, out of respect for other agencies, they've tried to keep their ASs within a certain level, but knowing that if we did have some guidance, or at least some, essentially explicit language that could let us know that we might have a little bit more authority to move outside of the current budget. Not necessarily constraint, but the way that we've operated previously would be very beneficial for us as we work with some of these agencies, and can start to fund some of the things that have now consistently been, I think, disregarded, or discarded from many of the agency applications, because they've recognized that we have consistently not funded those ASs. And so if we did have a little bit more guidance, I think that could be beneficial for us as a board moving forward, so that we could open up to the agencies to really assess what their current needs are, and to start funding those in a more appropriate way.
Thank you. Very helpful. Appreciate what you're doing. Any further comment? All right. That should do all the agenda items tonight, so we'll adjourn. Thank you.